Thank you all, I can hear the whole D's order. Right for pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Albrecht?
Beth.
She's there.
Here.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Guglin? Okay, Mr. Ratch? Mrs. Jerk?
Here.
Mrs. Margul?
Here.
Mrs. Olson?
Here.
She's got here, and Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Everyone's president. Alright, procedures of public participation. Prepare statements of your ethical worship, present to the board president prior to being addressed. Comments on agenda items should be made by rising persons, by the state in your name and address in some language provided. It will be ran up to three minutes to address the board. If three minutes are not enough, we'll start reading and speak. Three minutes are over, we will be asked to receive it. And the design of the agenda is also to know exactly upon comments we made within the section of the hand edition. Moving into the answers. We have no agenda edits. We're not being exacted such policy meetings tonight, and those are super technical.
Alright, I have three brief items. One is, super excited, this is kickoff of the 24-25 school year. It's been a long summer, but also a super short summer. I think we all know how that feels. Come apologies, there's always a phase of emotions. Some dread, some excitement. Hopefully more of the excitement side. So today, welcome back message went out to our families. Would like publicly thank the team that is still making sure that all preparations for day one of school are ready to go. That's everybody from facilities, maintenance, technicians, our transportation departments, force act, teachers, administrators, legislators, on and on and on. It's certainly a tasty team and everybody's coming together to make sure we're able to best for our students. So we're excited about that, looking forward to day one. Item number two. I think it's very appropriate just to take one moment to recognize our Olympian. Oh my goodness, Chris Chilwell, what a phenomenon. Thank you, Danny Moon and okay, what they do first, very, very proud. The third thing is just very brief, and everybody has in front of you a document that looks like this. So, this is one of those full disclosure moments, I'd like to, uh, sorry. I'm delighted to walk through what this is all about and why it's here now. So, Level Up Berks is a plan that the ECIU has been putting together in support with all school districts in the county. The goal of this plan is to encourage the pipeline of educators. Whether this is traditional paths where students go to college, or non-traditional, maybe somebody went to college to become an artist, and now we're trying to have the gravity towards the field of education. So, the way that they're looking to do this is to get information out on a landing page, on a website, levelupberks.org, billboard advertising, engage in local media, developing communication toolkit, a public service announcement, things that we all, the school districts, can use. Barter buses, surprisingly putting signage on the side of barter buses, they get a lot of positive feedback from, so that's something they're looking to do with social media campaign. All of that is part of what they're looking to do. And now, this is one of those full disclosure moments. This information came out towards the end of last school year. The ECIU was working during that time. It's no mystery, it's no secret, at that same time, we were going through a very challenging budget process. And, at that time, I was not going to be writing anything to the board that wasn't essential. We just had this past week, our administrative conference, all the administrative district of county came together, and the superintendent wants to end up together with the executive director, Dr. Hacken, who does phenomenal things for the county, and she made one more question again, talking about all of the data, about the decrease in future educators, and rationale, building pace to support this. Knowing where we stand now, seeing some of the funding that we're getting from the city, is not behind what we are anticipating, it's pretty much exactly spot on. What we were anticipating, the dollar figure is absorbable, but it comes down to, is there support for this? We do now have an individual within our organization that focuses very heavily on communication. I do believe this year, we're going to do a better job than maybe ever in getting our story out there. Maybe I've spoken to the board before about meeting the narrators of our story. I think we remain in strides towards that this year. But I also understand the value of teaming up as a county. If we do not participate in this, that's okay. You know, it's not like our research is slapped, our heritage is slapped. But on these websites like Level Up Berks, where all the school districts are listed, this is where you go to get this information. Our information would not be, our names would not be on some of the publications that are out there. It's hard to be vague exactly what ROI is going to be on this investment, to find out if it would indeed pump future educators into our pipeline, or not. Which is why I'm coming to you. Right now, I'm not looking for a decision, but this is something that I will have placed on the August 19th agenda. It just need that too late to gather on the committee of the whole agenda. So, I will have this listed, and, you know, I'm happy if you vote however you think is best. It's absolutely something that I think could be great, and is good to support, while at the same time, we have our own initiatives to drive and strengthen those educated pipelines. So, that is the information. I thought it was a little bit too much to put in an email, and it was too late to get on the cattle, which is why I'm welcoming that right now. Are there any questions about Level Up Berks at this time? You should know that at this rate, because we are above the 2,500 receiving threshold, it would be $3,500 to start support this state, I misspoke, we can't name it.
Has the state ensured it?
The state has not, this is a Level Up Berks effort.
I mean, the state can also acknowledge, I'm sorry, I can't see your right now. How should we, can we ask the state?
I am sure Dr. Hacken is in touch with all legislators, she has a phenomenal job with that.
Um, I have a question.
Yes.
Do you know the other schools that are perished right at this work?
Yes, I do have this. Not only. But if you have.
I just wanted to make sure, like, that we weren't the only ones that weren't doing it, or the only ones that were doing it, that kind of thing.
It is, it is the majority that is doing it, I believe at this time, eleven have confirmed, and most of the others are pursuing this path with their boards. I was the only one that followed up with our executive director, and she said, "I'm sorry right now financially, it's not the right choice for us." But, you know, she did circle back and say, "Are you sure?" So, that's why I'm here right now.
Eleven out of thirteen?
Eighteen, yeah, correct. I do anticipate. Yeah, I do anticipate at least five will go towards it. There's always a question on one or two, but it would be one or two. It would be one or two.
So what does everybody think about them?
I said I don't think we want to do this, but I know that.
I mean, it's.
What does it look like exactly for the district? Like is it, um, like, I don't know, like a teacher day, or teacher sorority, like what is the energy hub, or is it like, is it, I guess, sitting side by side with teachers? Like, what is the, I don't know.
This is, yeah, this is more about information sharing, getting people connected, the information they need to get into these different.
So we're just paying for the marketing?
The website development, the marketing, the education.
The billboards, yes, that they read.
They also feel that inquiries that come out, hey, I've noticed this interesting, tell me about it, all of that gets fed through the ECIU.
Is there any other student representation who are learning the ROI that investment?
I do not. Which is why this one's really hard to engage. And I'm not coming with a recommendation on this one, I think it could be good. I think we're also okay, so. But yes, we would be in the minority of the conferences today, which is still okay. Again, no actions needed at this time, I just want to share the information from the 19th, to get maybe discuss more, and then just say how to vote, kind of it.
Yeah, I think that's, I think you need to adopt this a little bit. Reach through, but it is, I mean, that's essentially, that's essentially the right marketing plan. They have strategy, usually the right, and since it was like the shortage. So again, it's, for, for the, I, I, I kind of agree personally, I agree with, in late stage, some of the schools that aren't participating, but it's really a, it's really, you have to talk back what you think of each other on investments, or every time, you know, versus if we think of our client, future teachers, I'm sure.
If the district has to be a dear one to pay for us to, uh, you know, like they set up for us, that's why I'm, so when you really want this, and you need to help, like, just because as a district, you have to follow mandates, the state doesn't pay.
Right.
And like, and we're, we're offering a very tight budget, so to pay for marketing, they want us to, I don't know.
Just, just to kind of clarify that area a little bit, that ideas have come from the county superintendent's mainly on, would it be great if he had this, and then the ECIU ran and developed a plan? So, it's not that the ECIU just coming out saying, hey, this is what we're gonna do, jump in. It was very much a collaborative discussion.
Right, those ones, yeah, too, with those superintendents, districts coming out, they have been saying, you know, checking for issues, and it's, 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 it's.
I think that we have national cuts, right?
Right.
But, they, they, it was somebody saw this ad, and it was like, oh, I should go into teaching, they get their teaching degree, it doesn't mean that they become a candidate, it doesn't mean they're yet.
Truthful, yeah, truthful. It's, and that's why it's really hard to gauge ROI on this particular, which is, and also why she's looking for, she, Dr. Hacken, is looking to consolidate headquarters across the county, because it's a little bit like a mugshot, you can go anywhere, but the goal is, you know, for us, to get more educators across the board. And of course, we're looking specifically at any whom, but the goal is more educators.
So then, if you had more educators, you got to make your pitch for the district, try to test it, just like any.
Right.
And do we have like a source as to why to show it, as the source?
Yes.
Do you need to address the source? Would probably be more of a backup.
It is being, it has been studied at us in the last twenty years, and such the last five years.
Yes, absolutely. There's a very long list of why people are not going to education anymore, can we write along highlights?
I mean, sure.
Okay, just, and this is based on.
A year ago.
Yeah.
No highlights.
Just off the tip of your, yeah. So, just based on, based on the data, there are a number of reasons for this, and please don't, don't, don't own the deliver, I'm just passing on the message. Oftentimes, you are, you are educators who usually, just by always end up with a master's degree. If you look at upper old positions with a master's degree, usually you're looking at budget compensation that's significantly higher than what educators pay. A lot has to do with the demands that are increased on our educators. Their, their workload sometimes is borderline manageable, and that's not just because of their bullying principles or mean people, it's because the expectations that they have on them, set forth by mandates established at the state level, the hours of observations, the hours of mandated trainings. And then also, when you, when you look at the demands that are on them from our local communities, oftentimes, we see that some of our educators who were once idolized are no longer idolized. Because sometimes they're vilified, and they're just trying to do their job. We know the impact social media has had on our students, and also our staff. So often, misinformation has been going out to the public that so-and-so, you know, has been bullying my child, let us say, oh yeah, that teacher is awful, I had them five years ago, and then you have pages and pages and pages, so. Menting about a particular employee, it is not always an enviable position to me, and at the end of the day, our teacher's spirit deeply by our students, but decreased competitive wages. In 2019, the quality retirement plan that we all traditionally think teachers have, that's followed by replacements with a much more traditional, you know, business model retirement plan. So, all of those perks and things that were in place before, whether that's societal views, or healthcare benefits, that, that has been eroded, while you have the increased demand, all of those things together, you end up almost within an environment where you have teachers counseling future teachers out of the profession, because it's not easy at all.
There is one more thing, just because everything you said is quantitative, I just wanted one more thing that's quantitative. Baby boomers are the largest generation that's still this long in this country, and they are, that goes up to people born in 1965, and they're all retiring at significant rates. You've got the largest, the largest generation, if that, if 20% of them are teachers, but the people they're supposed to pay over, which is generation X, and, and the landowners Gen Y, Gen Z, if only 15% of those people go to education because of all the things that 12%, their viewers won't take over their job, so that's a great retirement.
Yeah, that's a very good point. And, because there was, I keep talking about it, but there was a very challenging pandemic that we all went through. There are a number of those boomers that ended up going into retirement earlier than they thought they were going to otherwise, because it was hard. So for all of those reasons, we have less educators today than we have, less of a need. That's not to take away from, it's a new school year, guys, we're excited.
So, did you get, did you get, make that definition for this? Or is that more, I mean, you can't wait until you're teenagers?
So, I would have to follow up with Dr. Hacken about what. Right. I, I'm sure Dr. Hacken is, is pursuing as many additional revenue generating as possible, but based on the formula, this is, this is a request for us. Any additional revenue, I'm sure would be for extending advertising time, or additional billboards, additional lessons, whatever.
You did put on the advertising sponsor, right?
Yeah, it's, obviously, it's harder when you're trying to grab eighteen school districts. Districts is pretty fit, fits, that this is what the formula is, and what they're willing to do.
But we have our, we have our marketing person that is fully appetitive, essentially. She is, she's a person, I agree, that's the question.
She's doing great. Yes.
Alright, and, oh, questions concerned, are there anything to talk about that? Good. Alright, so, her finance, actually, it's 281526, for your review, does anyone have questions concerning those items?
I, I do have a question about, do we do, uh, the, the, the tax payments? Again, for this, like, for someone who are seniors, do we have additional information? Because I was pretty much like, this has all sorts of next amount of taxes, and I'm like, so, I don't want to build a network, if it's like, you know, if it's like, uh, things like that, but I should really put them out, right? That's, that will probably be out.
Sure, I'm gonna lead on, Mr. Lobb, to talk a little bit more about the legal taxes.
Yeah, you're correct, that's what, that's what they're trying to do, they're our collection agency, that all this legal taxes go to, so, before, you know, we present this, I mean, if it's the boards, that you guys know, like, they're wondering if they're house due, or else we have to pay the taxes. So, it's, uh, it's not something we want to do, but there's, they have a chance to pay those taxes until that time, and then they can stay in their house, but, this is what we're trying to collect for our kids.
It's also been in the works probably for a while, correct?
It's been years, yes, if you look at it, at last, I started, guys. Yeah, I was, I wasn't about to sign this, because I was, when you see it, it's like, it, it, you know, you get it from person.
Yeah, to your point, like, it's a process, or something like that, it's a, it's a period of time.
But we have, we've, most years.
Very, very few.
Yeah, I, I'm not saying like, a gazillion, but I remember seeing at least one, in the last few years.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I see. And they can't take action before we approve it, so that's why we're, we're, we're gonna approve it before we do anything.
Before we do vote on this, can I get more information about the homeowners?
I can reach out to Board Office, and see if they can reach out to them, or what letters, and what they can do, like, maybe by last chance, or something like that. If need be, I don't know what part, what, my part would be in that, you know, or a site I don't know, to do, but I need sort of to do that, and let them know, maybe like one more time, before we have our, our meeting over.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know also, like, how long we've been.
It's all, yeah.
It'd be years if that's the. Okay, so, you're trying to get more information? Yeah, I'll reach out to Board Office, and I'll see what they've done. And, this was, this was in, in several months ago, so, I was waiting for our first meeting, so maybe, just touch up, touch base with them, and see if they, you know, paid, or have they had anything for, I don't want to do that at all.
Is there? I'm just wondering about the type of breakfast, it's like, it's very, this is, like, it's very, very.
Yeah, just all you have is, you know, access.
What? The new agenda?
Yeah, Chris, if you, if you give us more information on some, on graphics, or something similar, I think that would be, I think, maybe before we go.
Alright, public, public comment on this, uh, agenda edits?
Well, hold on, we have like four amendments, but should we go through them all, one by one?
Well, that's just the six.
Right.
I thought you were able.
Oh, no.
I'm sorry, I, I was the only one that was asking after this, my bad.
Well, um.
We'll come back to you, Mr. Mark.
Yeah, sorry about that. Uh, on the River Rock contract that we have, how does that work with the standard coming? Because that is a roughly $300,000 contract with that.
I told you, there are AEDY provider for students who are privately misbehaved in our schools, or students, for example, who brings a knife into school, that's where they replace, generally speaking, unless they had, unless they had an IED. The contract, they are, they have multiple places, if the building were to change hands, the contract is current, they will have to be honored by the roof for the remainder of the year, that once they do decide, they, they have other facilities in which they can be considered, so, that's a good question. Hey, that was, now, my answer is question? That was my understanding, too, that it was, they were definitely having on that contract, it's not that they were.
My, my other years, are we, uh, this, this is part of the new requirements that we're paying for a school physician?
No, no, that's, that's been here.
Voice of support.
They didn't have one for some reason, and we had a lot of difficulty not having one, because we couldn't provide medications, we didn't have physicals for athletes, we had all sorts of issues for about six months, because we couldn't find one. And then, we found back to the boot shop, and of course, she really helped us to come on board, so we had a rash of public contacting us, very upset over the inability to give the students, even I, your girlfriend, who were not even able to do that, how had it, yeah, while we're doing our research, not required, there's a, we are at a break in Spanish, I think, after we won't have one.
Right. Probably, so, to, to, to spell, we could find, you know, if it's a slide, I don't know, it's not really, right?
Yeah, someone retired, if they've been doing it for a long time, and, we were, we were shaving trees for, for, because we don't, we are Dr. Burke. Now, we're getting ready, should be a Dr. Burke for a school district, anywhere. I, we appreciate her being on the side of this.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
This is Mary Morris, in here, pretty good. So, does that mean that there's, of our president, from here, are there parties that
Yes, that means five days, right?
And, and, and if, you know, is that to have five instead of four days, and not realizing?
It's actually a great question, of, historically, we've had, we've, with our standard case laws, we have three days' leave with the parent foundation. As a result of the pandemic, we've been to that, and increased number of cases that we've had. Just so you go, know, that part of this is the most that, by a graph, from PCCP, that was written into the grant itself, and so, the additional space, but not like Carol Phil here, they did raise the rates, but they say that they can't right now, because everyone got to be at high universal levels, but, just so you know. It's fine, right? Any other questions, what are his rights? Discussion.
Rich Martino, I have an internship. I just want to say, ironic, I find contradiction, that the discussion is a concern about people that have not, or are not paying their taxes, but you keep raising taxes. It just strikes me as just very, I don't know, thank you.
Shannon Arnold, 830, Carter Town Road. My question is on, also, the legal taxes. The collection agencies, are, are they purchasing the, the tax code, and then claiming it? Or are they working on a commission to collect taxes from the school district?
I believe it's a lot, and Mr. Lobb?
Yeah, they're working for us, we pay them a fee and a percentage.
Okay.
Yeah, so, any delinquents, we have contracted them, they've committed some years now, it's just like, the houses. Uh, it's, it's just like, the house is several years old and it's a sizable amount that they owe right now. And they haven't been any effort to pay it and, uh, but they consider it a sheriff's sale. And then we get our, we get that money, you know, for the, for our sale. So it's, it's, it's just sort of kind of, that's why I'm trying to get more information so that we can get a payment.
So, right, is it like hundreds of thousands of dollars that people aren't paying their taxes or is it several years?
Several years.
So would this be a, a case by case, uh, scenario that would have to be required by the school district? Or do they just have free ring to, to have someone's home for a sheriff's sale?
No, what they do is they look at the taxes they're paying and send for charity. They're like a, a collection agency, of course. So they're attorneys and they're working on getting a collection and then the money is always saved for charity. They make some kind of agreement with them. They don't do anything, they don't have any, uh, payments or anything. It's, it's, it's into the thousands of dollars that they go after for something like this.
Because if, I, I do agree with Rich, it kind of seems, you know, that you keep raising taxes, but then there are people who can't afford taxes. And I would, I'll use my mother as an example. Uh, my father, actually, like fifty years ago, she never really worked. She's collecting social security. So she is on a very, very limited payroll. And for the last, and my dad retired probably forty-five, thirty years ago. So as your older generation, that most of our population in like Berthyr and, and New Hampshire, my mom came by to get a job. So, you know, that's one of the things. And that's why, you know, I understand why Rich is so passionate about you guys. Okay, we're gonna just raise taxes. I know that you guys can put a lot of thought into it, but at the end of the day, you guys are impacting a large population of super citizens that can't go out anywhere. They're, they're fixing their income from twenty-five, thirty, forty years. So, you know, before you start sharing second people's homes and, you know, raising taxes, it's, you know, it is something to, you know, thank you.
Isn't, isn't it also, I'm not gonna get into anything more than this, but it, you know, there are probably other issues. It's not just us going after these people. They probably have other issues for to get to this point. I mean, it's, it's not just us trying to take their home. I'm sure that it's involved with lawyers, judges. I mean, it's not just us, as long, no one wants to do this, of course.
Right.
When I, but I don't really care, there's more to that on the street, but I, I don't really care as well to provide some better information. Sure, I feel a little bit, to your point, and Chris, for your share. Yeah, we realize that. Well, that's, I mean, that's just the reality of, I mean, I don't mean single, so I, you know.
No, no.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to face the comments up, going to, you know, it's like, uh, like I said, in the past, the case, I don't see the camera coming around, I don't know.
So if you don't sell their homes, you're just gonna forgive their taxes?
Say it again.
So if you don't sell their homes, you're just gonna forgive their taxes?
Wait, well, I didn't say that.
Well, I'm asking.
Well, Rich, I think honestly, just my opinion is, if I would look at, I don't want to use some case bases. I don't know enough about the collections of the legal properties to speak on how that works from a legal legislative standpoint. So that's why we had, so this is why we had to, this was a little complicated, I think, this is what's. But to your point, it's not something that you ever want to do, that we're gonna kill people out of their homes. Some of these folks, that Chris pointed out to me, that they've been situation where our spouses have been deceased for, you know, twenty years. So it's, you know, there's an accumulation of things that have to happen online for people. It's out there. So I'm sure, or I believe that if there's some correction being given to the question, you see, offer to, you know, try to resolve every avenue before they have to give that call. So again, they're providing this condition, so it's, um, the state does offer, like, for seniors that you can go on and block their taxes. Um, you know, it's, my parents, but I know, I'm their own right, but others also a little bit right now. But I did look online and I know that people in the middle category, senior, they can get some tax relief, but I mean, of course, I have to do the best I can. You know, come on, but nobody's selling us out either.
I will call, speaking of that internship, in response to Mr. Scott, we may not, you may not, the school district may not be the only reason that people are losing their homes. But because we are kids, that's the way I knew, where schools have to be, and with school property tax, school taxes are the number one reason why people are losing their homes, people's money. And I know we've tried different ways through legislature to get things passed to change the way taxes at school systems are funded, that everybody can refund people instead of the higher school, that districts put their taxes, that children have much more advantage than the university schools, children do. But I just wanted to state that school property tax is the number one interstate of things I, for people.
I was not aware of that. In fact, I was not aware of that. I was trying to discuss this and then you.
Yeah, I know, but being out in the community and meeting people, I've met, thank God it's not me. I've met many senior citizens who will tell me that they've gone off medication, that they had to cancel their, their cable TV, that they can't get their driveway fixed, and they're gonna get a fine for not continuing driving because they have to put the money aside for the school property tax. So when you're gonna focus on somebody who owes property taxes, please look closely at who you are focusing on. Because you have seniors that have become medically disabled in some way. Somebody suffering with cancer who have tremendous monthly costs with no income coming in. So please look carefully. Look at the people, not just the taxes we get, but please look at the people.
Well, we'll get that firm on Christian. Thank you very much. That.
Two things. I'm sorry, I mean, Jimmy, they are, I'm sorry. Jimmy, I have a question. I have two things. First thing is, um, what you talked about, uh, the jaw, the paper, you know what I mean? Seventeen or thirteen schools are in it?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever. The two don't go in, it doesn't matter, wait, because if fifteen go in, they're still doing that show thing. We can still get teachers from the, from the fifteen million, at least.
Yeah, what I understand is just.
Look, you're not, you're not excellent at law. Yeah, I'm true. This guy right here, he is the freaking man, Chris. Tell me, Chris is the man. I know you all come to me, he's best school board member we've ever had. I tell you right now, he works himself, he sees self, he has questions. I'm gonna tell you, just like he said, we this, we always have this, is it, no one raises a question, they go, yeah. Look at him, go on, teachers are out of it because they don't pay attention to what's going on. Thank you, Chris, for paying attention, asking questions.
Thank you.
Good, you're a fan, man.
By the way, Carol fights, uh, I have a comment on the first part of the marketing plan also. Um, we're talking about probably rather than all, I think, that we should tighten up our balance if we can't accommodate our online. Maybe we do something we shouldn't be doing, cause ten programs at thirty-five hundred is thirty-five thousand, you know, there's something that matters of it. Um, and, uh, it seems like, uh, kind of odd for me to jump into a pool with your competitors. Cause that's basically, we're all competing for that same, you see, it's a school district, we're all competing for that pool of teachers. So it doesn't, it seems like a, a strange prank to me, I don't know, it's a, um, not, it's a, like, 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 do it. And, um, I just wondered about the average placement that, um, we have that, you know, like month, month, um, because usually center.
Yeah, we're over ten, it's ten or eleven, it's our election power.
About a month?
No, for the year, that's a little bit for the year.
Cause as I understand.
That's minimal in terms of like, who are you, should we, we start the year with like nine kids. What they do in, what, and I can answer your question, what we do is we, we purchase some seats in advance for a couple of reasons. One, we need, we need them, if you want their historical data, we need them to be able to place students to do something unexpected and to, um, have commercials over there. Uh, so we have whole seats down there, they give us a substantial discount if we purchase in advance. Most of those are filled for eight, the end of year and then we have an additional couple of seats in the open area, so of course, that's, that's a wonderful question.
And we, we kind of, we heard to eat kids in and out of their seats, right? Like somebody went.
Correct, yes.
Four months and then somebody else might go over, but we're averaging about ten?
Ten, about ten, yeah, on a yearly basis.
Thank you. Thank you all. Good job.
David Poole, more for three year old, uh, I have a internship. Uh, I think later, the economic aid, I think, fell on a lot of us today. Uh, I think we all better start getting a look at what effect it's gonna have on future, the ability of the populace to continue to pay taxes at the rates that you guys are increasing. Uh, inflation has really hit hard, prices have hit hard, I know it, prices have hit hard within the school district, within the, uh, capacity, uh, uh, schools to provide. But at the same time, the taxpayers, uh, are, are gonna continue to get hard, to get hard. Uh, I forbid we have, uh, the recessionary period coming along, jobs lost, etc. We're gonna have people who aren't gonna be able to pay the taxes. And I just want to just beat everybody with one old song that I've, uh, I've learned a long time ago, "Just because you can't." I mean, raise taxes, just being the show at this point. Thank you.
I was planning on seeing, but I'm just no taxes. I know that two public school districts actually love their taxes for, for time, for years, so it's possible. I think if work, it's not, you know, even, we can see what they're doing, cause it can be done. Um, and, you know, it's not very clear what the average salary for administrators are, so of course, I have to look online and find this. But a hundred and three thousand dollars is the average salary for an administrator in this district. And the average person living in a damn unit, it's still, it's still four thousand dollars. Um, you know, the business is scaling. You know, I know government agencies don't work, but the business is, you know, I mean, just to raise the taxes. Um, you know, you put the programs in place and then they work all the way. We need to, you know, change that fundamentally because what you're doing is taking away homes for people. These students eventually want them to stay and, um, live and continue to live possibly. We need to set up the environment for that happening. From the perspective that they're gonna not wanna stay here, in the threat of, if they do stay here, retire, want to live here, they might lose their home because of the taxes. So a fundamental change has to take place and it can happen. I know that it can happen. Um, just working on the school district and see if they're doing right, because, um, we need to buy.
All right, gentlemen, very good. Actually, this young person made a very, very big point about public housing. They're the envy of the entire county. I actually, it's maybe longer than the last three years, it's zero or negative. Um, and again, just as a reminder, what they have going for them is they have to set the A corridor, which has many, many warehouses that have been working in. So when we talk about how we increase our revenue generation, that's exactly what we need to be looking at. What can we do as an organization? Uh, we incentivize the retirement community to be going on, going in. That's the, the project we spoke about. Um, that's one of the biggest revenue generators that we're looking to see, uh, in recent time. And then again, the goal is that plus that is in, it will incentivize future development there. Uh, but again, uh, you can go down many different school districts, uh, maybe corridors. I think, uh, it was Pittstown just had this situation, there was talk about a warehouse going in in Pittstown, and then the community voted and they didn't want it. Just remember, it's, it's double edged sword, you don't want to get, get truck traffic again. But those are the big things that bring you revenue dollars. So we need to continue to investigate as many increases to revenue as possible, while still at the same time ensuring that we're toeing the line on our expenditures, which again is why this level of work was not presented to you, I'm sure, cause I understand that. All right, I, I promise I wouldn't put it down. I didn't do it. So that's all I can say on that one, but she raised a very big point. And the other young lady, what pointed out, um, she had a weird, I'm sorry, I forgot, it's cool, it's cool. So what has been being argued for a long time about, say, for your first election, I would answer it.
The fundamental problem, everybody takes shots at the local school boards, but until the state changes the funding formula, which is the fundamental options here. So you really need to rail against your, like, officials. I know that's a long, tough sport, and I, I get it. But really, if you don't get legislative change, you're just gonna be stuck in the same zone. So that's my suggestion.
It's not gonna last a long.
Yeah, and, and you've been saying, we won't be fighting that fight, but, you know, every governor keeps promises of, you know, to property tax for, you know, to start. So, but, like, you know, you either have to say, I guess, or, you know, you fight the fight, I don't know what else to do. Anybody else? Any, any other sort of, let's see, what do we, two A D Ys? All right. And then we move on to programs. I have to get my crystal work. I have three eight one three three eight. Any people have questions about this, this and that? Yes, sir.
Our, uh, I, I took a look at all four handbooks and they are all about seventy to eighty percent copies of each other, different formats, different points of contact and teachers. Why can't we have one handbook, again, seventy to eighty percent is the same exact language, just very differently. And that actually has all the contact information for your school in one handbook, did you get unified?
Unified, that handbook is actually old, twenty-five, twenty-six, linear, identify distinction, work on it. Some of these, some of these things, they actually be a bit more of a first process to, to practice. So play, bring them on, but we may be able to have fun in this place, like, kind of, if you get, so, and adjust the tier rest of the institution. Any public comments on items three eight one three three?
Actually, I have a question.
Oh.
Um, has, have any, um, changes been made to the, the in-school phone policy since last year? I didn't see it in the news.
Sure, so the only thing that really changed, so here's, and, and my period question, is there a change in cell phone policy? Last year, probably did at the middle school, because we're having issues with middle school, is we were certain or prohibited, cell phones, uh, in, in classes, basically is a complete break zone, I think like that way. So primary, intermediate, middle school, cell phones are not allowed. Um, at the high school, we're still operating with a regular green model. So red, not allowed in bathrooms, locker rooms, um, yellow, classrooms, teacher permitted for activity. Uh, green, things like lunch, um, study hall, that type of requirement. Uh, we had a number. We had a number of conversations about cell phones, and I think what we're seeing across the nation is more and more states that are looking to just ban cell phones in, in school districts. There is research to support prohibiting them in classrooms with our one-on-one initiative. We have the technology and devices available to do the schoolwork that we're, we're looking to do, and we see it as a little bit of a distraction. I would love to tell you that I personally struggle some with the right path. I think the easy path, Sam, that's, but I'm struggling a little bit with the right path. So our goal, when students leave D and A, no matter where they go, whether it's to the workplace, the military, college, they have a set of skills that they're able to be successful when they, when they leave us. So we all understand these things live with us now, they are part of us, whether I like it or not, it's always in my pocket unless I'm competing, and usually it stays down. Because for me, in these sets, and I'm not constantly distracted every time it shakes, I am not picking it up to take a look at it, those are skills that I've developed. I mean, if I have a conversation with people, but have a constant glance, glance, you have in my phone, is that a skill that our students currently have? I would dare say no. Then we struggle a little bit, what is the role of the school district to teach those skills? And that's, that's a little bit where we're struggling. And I would say that we're probably losing that battle a little bit. So the general guidance, Mr. Sors and I have spoken and have written about this, is we're looking to tighten up our current practice. So essentially, the only time cell phones can count is if they're in study hall or at lunch. What we don't want to see is, we don't want to see students constantly distracted by cell phones in classrooms. That's the biggest concern that we have. If we, as an organization, come in and used to do a ban, and said, "No cell phones," being fully transparent, there will be a lot of significant pushback about that. And sometimes it's okay to let the state come in and say, "It's a ban." And then we don't have to fight that fight, we don't have to be on the leading edge. So again, what we did is we're talking about tightening up our practice to make sure the cell phones become as minimally destructive as possible, while at the same time, also being totally okay if that's the meeting comes in and says, "We're going to ban them." Right now, there is a senator that is looking to do that, and I, I don't think it's going to be bad. I also struggle, as I, as I said, is just banning it, the right path, but that's, that's where we are right now. So no significant change to the handbooks.
But I'm cleaning up a high school handbook right now, with the problems that fall under SCC, which is on here, but easy to come during class, like what, what is the possible?
So if you guys are enjoying here our high school principal, I will allow Mr. Sors to say, come on up.
So it is handling the classroom first, and the teacher should call home and say that it's a problem. The like Mr. Walker said, we've talked about this at Ozzy. As a shop teacher, I taught kids how to use tools, cell phones are a tool. No one ever teaches them how to use the tool, and will they ever use it correctly? Nowadays, side by side speaking, I doubt many parents show kids how to use phones correctly, being able to set up a delve over the last twenty years. We just give them the phone, we expect them to know it, nine times out of ten, they use it so often, they show us how to use them. So in the building, the rule of thumb is bell, bell. When we're ready to start class, phone should be away, and when it ends, folks can come out in the hallway, they can come out in the cafeteria, study halls. That's just like us, when we work, if we're up, right, we can get our phone out. Or if we're not in a meeting, or not having a one-on-one conversation, we can check our phone. If students really have something, come up, they can leave the room for the bathroom, want to get a drink in the hallway, and check their phone and return to class. Because I know a lot of times when it comes up, and they're sent to my office, or Mr. Burger, Mrs. Hoppus's office, nine times out of ten, it's either their boss or their parent that was texting them. So I think it's more important that we teach them how to use the tool correctly, so that they can be successful in the classroom, or at work, or in the military, and then when they leave here, they have the skills that their peers, whose phones were taken from them, and they weren't developing skills, they're ahead of the game. And that's always been the goal. Usually, we don't have a huge problem with getting to a suspendable offense, usually it's group conversation, call home, parent cooperation, partnership, and we typically don't have a lot, but it's something that we could tighten up across the board. I will say that when I have discussions with our kids, it's usually our high-flying kids that have a problem with the cell phone ban, because they've mastered those skills about keeping the phone away, being successful in the academics, and they'll use it when they can, but they don't let it become a distraction. They're usually the ones that struggle with the ban, and it's all for.
I think though, I, I think though, I miss the middle school, even when they know who's their phones, they're using their iPads. I know at the middle choir, when you use your iPad, the same, there's kids playing games sometimes, and it's like, the bullying happens, the right, and it's like.
I think it's the same thing about, daughter saw a fight happen in middle school, because somebody video taped it, on their iPad, and then they were talking to everybody, and that was, they stirred quite a.
Thanks, let's, let's rewind twenty years, right before technology. I dare say, some of the people sitting around here probably wrote a note to a friend, like there are always things that are going to be a distraction, right? You know, certainly, you want to go out with me, yes, I'll check a lot, it still happens, still happens. Yeah, yeah, correct, you know, or whatever. But those, those situations are maybe not as powerful as they're perceived to be, and our goal is to work through those with our students, with our families, the way that we handle any of them. And so far, I can, I can tell you, it's not a massive problem here, but some can be one right now.
I did have one other quick comment, oh, the TSI plan, it actually does not have you listed, it has Dr. Greg.
I do know that. It's not submitted yet, and before this, I actually did ask Mr. Sors to come up and say three minutes about, on the TSI plan, because it's just academia, everybody doesn't understand what this is all about. So Mr. Sors would be someone who will come and explain what this is all about, because it's a lot of agents, that should say something very simple.
So each year, PDE evaluates schools on a holistic basis with different metrics for data that schools produce, attendance, academics, extracurricular activities, our students have BCTC, the DOKD performance is attributed to us, so it's a, it's a wide metric, it's called the Future Ready Index, and that's a great program. So this year, one of the subgroups for our graduation rate was identified as being low, and that was particular to the special education subgroup, the graduation rate was considered low by the state standards. There's two levels of the TSI plans, there's A TSI, which is the more intensive one, we were on three years ago, we got off of that one, and now this one's TSI, which is more leveled out, because we were only identified for that one metric. So the metric basically is our special education population's co-located graduation rate, which means they come in in four years, they come in at year one, they graduate in four years. But what they don't take into account is that under special education law, a special education identified student can stay in the public education system until they're twenty-one. So we have a lot of students who decide to stay at BCTC and finish a program, or stay at one of their placements and finish the program so that they can be successful in life. And we usually allow them to do that as long as they're being successful, and it's for their benefit for them to be successful. In doing that, though, they don't graduate when they're forty or co-located, so they're counted against us. This year, it just so happens, because of numbers, our percentage slipped a little up, so it was only by half a percentage point that we made it. It's bitter, but we had to create the plan. So with the plan, we have to create three goals. Our overall goals are math performance increasing for all subgroups, our integration of CBT for benchmarking, which is towards Keystone, it's aligned with Keystone, and then regular attendance for overall student population, and we're looking, we're not to grow from seventy-six point eight to ninety percent. So those are the three major goals for the plan. The plan takes a year, we'll be reevaluating at the end of the year, and then we'll either be taking all TSI, move them to A TSI, or kind of all TSI.
How many students do we have that qualified to stay in at twenty-one?
For the, for the population, it was about eighteen, and.
Eighteen.
Total, from the population, or percentage of that, said that only seventy-six percent of that eighteen evaluated, but that's not true, it's just a large chunk of the state in their program, it's a year five or year six, where it's only twenty-one.
So will the state change the school, will the school remain twenty-one, right?
Does that make?
No, it's always been a long range.
And we have to educate them.
They increased it a year.
Yeah, they're about twenty-one.
Yeah, about two, two years ago. Yeah, they got a maximum year, correct.
And sometimes we don't have any students that choose to stay in programs, they get their program to under four years, and they come out the week, so it's never been an issue, but I would assume because when this class was coming through the system and COVID hitting, a number of them decided to stay in the program to get their time to present in the program. So that's what we're selling on, I think it's seven to half a percent.
So, so we'll have a, like, or just, where's the world, this morning on this, and during the summer, uh, twenty-five?
Yeah, it's evaluated every year, our future, you can see in the Future Ready too, in the top right corner of every metric, it tells you the year, the school year that the data is used from, so many of them are lagging metrics, so this metric is most likely used to get hold of from the class of twenty-two or twenty-three.
And is the steering committee in a ongoing committee, or is it, is the steering committee, was the someone who wants to be done for this year?
Many of the committees, was the committee that we had when we were on A TSI a few years ago.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have any certain places on there that are.
Some will have been replaced, but.
So some people we haven't updated that, and we hold on it.
Yes, there will have to be updated.
So we addition of names, this, this refresh, but okay, one, here's some, okay, three.
This, this is one of those challenging things that you analyze through doing the right hand for students, and that's, that's where we are, this is what we're, it's helped out in Congress, budget based on current metrics, we slip right under the threshold that the state has set for us. Any other comments for the concerns that three eight one three eight? Any public comments on this? Anyone personnel? Items four eight one? Just for targets, destinations, any comments or questions about that?
Teacher that's leaving September twenty-seven, so those students will get her. My teacher.
Choices.
Uh, it's Lawrence.
Oh, I see, yeah, I see where you are. Yeah, everything we try to work with other school districts, there's a chance we may have a hole in her, if we have a, a person that can start here with us, we won't hold her, so it's very situation, same thing with, um, three. Forty-one, any questions for your, um, so. Her appointments, this one, this two. Any questions about those? I would like to highly point individual. So sitting in the back corner of the serving right now, a little quick, is Mr. Matthew Brandt, he is the individual that is aligned here, and you were approval on the nineteenth, to be our head director of safety and security. Just a little bit of background on him, because he's a very public physician. He's coming to us with PhDs in both health administration and public ser, and public health, a master's in criminal justice, six plus years as US Army officer, experience with logistics, with PNSK, purchasing manager, opposite of buildings. He came across through a very challenging interview process where we had very strong candidates, the pool was exceptionally strong. He goes, he came across very, very clearly, he started working, a great communicator, very focused on task management skills. He, he came in with a thirty, sixty, ninety, day plan, rated, hit it round and running, and I will tell you, without doubt, he is the individual that spoke by far the most about students. So he checked all the boxes, and I am extremely confident, we're going to be happy. Obviously, anytime you change somebody in this role, Mr. Jeff Roderick did a nice job for us, but I'm very excited to have Mr. Matthew Brandt. All right, ever, those are your comments on this.
So how many teachers do, I mean, it says, George, how many teachers are, is this?
Great question, actually, there is one and four for each teacher in each position. Okay, so one more. Listen, some of them, these are summer, they actually have some, I'll be off now, I just got some.
Public comment?
Public comment on this four eight one three one three. We have presentation, but we're, as, as far as we're, as far as we're. As far as I'm, I know, I will be careful, in case I miss Rich Marquinhos' email, we have not reported on this time. Did I miss anything, Rich?
No, I'm reading myself.
Yeah, you're going to read yours up? Okay. Before one eight, BCIU, there was going to be last month, the, uh, who has been this level for this month, thirty-four points. BCTC report?
I'm doing that on June twenty-sixth, it was kind of a wrap up of the school year, first day of school, and then it's August twenty-sixth, they had their summer PM, their middle tours, and again, they had a dateless, a hundred and three students, and our students attended. It's very crowded at the end, so, I'm trying to attend, you guys, and, and that's everything. Next meeting is August, twice, please, that's what we need to turn.
Can you legislate action, word for word?
I'll be able to go meet you as well for the next couple of days in November.
And any other reports, the UIT, Mr. Marlowe?
Yeah, okay, so we, uh, meeting on June twenty-seven, we went over Q two, Q two, inherently credentials, they essentially leave on business, criminal charges, parents, and, and they went over, uh, the legal department, and basically their, their businesses, their eye, so. It's pretty short, so it's all have to report, and the next meeting is Thursday, September twenty-sixth.
Thanks, Marlowe. Any public comment on this, words? And Roman? Questions, comments, reviews? Do you require some headshots?
And the lesbian, I guess, we get pretty out of, uh, dating charge, the online program, can we get that for the next meeting, so that we know how that program's.
Yeah, so it's, it's just a little difficult to quote, so we have a column in the government report for the personal, it's hard to know, like, which ones was in there. It's hard to know, like, which ones was in there before, which one is new. So I, I've prepared some, so just read through. So we have, um, six, uh, students that are coming in from a cyber charter into our virtual academy. We have six students that were intending to leave this school district to a cyber charter that we've been able to retain. And then we have three more students that were in an external cyber charter, that are coming all the way back to inverse because of our efforts. So based on the six in history, that points back fifteen, it's hard with some of the backwards. Um, still trying to get at least another five, uh, to make sure we're ahead of some of our numbers. Um, I think, uh, actually, Mr. Ritter, our, uh, virtual academy coordinator just emailed me before I was walking in, he said, I just sent another email, another parent. We are actively pursuing, um, all students that are not coming to, uh, getting a new academy.
So, um, so I thought I should report my, um, summer, uh, totally D A, right?
Yeah, and that's, that's where it is, it's a little challenging. So you can see the total numbers, you can see that all the, in the version of the academy, but it's hard to, to try to break it down, so that's why we just have this, like, exclamation. I think that's the day you committed one, I don't know, right? Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Marquinhos. Uh, monthly, monthly, also, those cases, staff soldiers. Questions and word on this, please. And issues for five, this six. Questions and word on this. Any public comments on this, please? All right, moving on to creative, such a committee.
Oh, our meeting is canceled, and, uh, this meeting is...
All right, any public vote, any questions on the word, word? Any public comment on the current, such a committee?
So please, in terms of, can you, Mr. Rich?
Yeah, we just had our meeting, it went out before this one. Uh, definitely, like, over at the time limit, I think, so hopefully, they will jump in and give us a little small case. Uh, main issue was, uh, the railroad bus issue that led to an investigation into the, uh, community by, uh, the P M C. Uh, the committee agrees with our option three, where the seven students that jumped on a bus to go the mile down the road and then pause for the school, they would be good and follow them. Uh, that's our recommendations to the committee, uh, but no new families will be able to party in the bus since, since, before. Uh, the next sort of big presentation was seeing a friend came in to talk about, uh, potential for solar. Uh, essentially summarized everything, the school should spend about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars on electric and gas. Uh, we are, our rate has increased from seven cents to basically nine cents per K O V H, which is our energy. Uh, and it's going to go even higher due to, uh, T and D cost of utilities, which, why? So as the school is shrinking, we're probably looking at up to a percent increase in energy costs. Uh, we can partake now in some of the big, with the solar, uh, which we have to investigate before, about these, uh, new grants that we should now, and, uh, that was pretty much it, anything regards to that. And then Jay, if you mind, you can come and talk about the, uh, updates on our, the schools.
So we'll start with the H VAC project, um, actually, real quick, reputation dates, so Friday, August second, we can tank this salt. Uh, August nineteenth, all the routes will be accessible to parents, E I, under staff, fund rat. That'll be the H VAC project. So August, E I, all still dates here, um, everything's, uh, we're a few days, about three, four days ahead. Um, we have a little bus, we had, we're great, um, controls are set, uh, start eight, ten, um, here for the, so this is the high school portion. Um, we still only have, we got three more units delivered today, three of the last part, top units here for the high school. Um, obviously, controls are ten, um, startup initial problem units will be eight, one, and eight, two. Then we'll do a walkthrough, we'll have a nutshell walkthrough, eight, fifteen, that the goal is to have conclusion here for the high school. On August twenty, and we're off, and it's already been happened. Two summer projects here for each building, we'll start with the high school. Um, for twenty-sixth, replaced and painted. Um, threshold, two hundred and four, I've got just fixed today, uh, put the whole threshold out, put a threshold in there, and also, we're still having that. Um, exterior light bulbs, um, didn't start replacing some of the older bulbs, uh, that, that been, which was a bar clock here, so, um, that's all done here, that's the building lot, all these super lights are all, uh, two hundred and fifty ton children, they'll be repaired. I realize, I realize the proposal here, uh, seventy ton children, was repaired, we're still just waiting on the E X B module. Um, we're about to accept that. Uh, and then we have a window in eight, three, which is a new group, that's correct, replace that. Middle school, actually painted, uh, the guidance offices, and a few other classrooms that, where we use that, the fresh upgrade. Um, we have a power washing project, which is in progress here, which we'll see, so both sides, the front and back, both schools, the power wash. Um, lights, we'll repair the sidewalk in front of the door too, I hope you know, it was kind of raised up, so we're standing down a little bit, and also, uh, so the asphalt. Um, next week, we're installing three new cameras, uh, they are going to be toward the, the back of the building, uh, basically the buses were. Uh, this is a project that works, we got a lift, all that stuff is set up, the lines, and everything. Uh, the features are done, and they look awesome, so if you get a chance to jump over there, do a picture on the, on the, on the, on the.
That's just, if you send me the very top, I'm gonna start to do it, you know, Dave?
Okay, yeah, so, yeah, they have, like, as planned, pickups, um, good, P C, uh, reformed the playground, uh, since we got new equipment. Uh, remember, December, we got some equipment there, so we added some, this wall, um, replaced the eight-way secret presser in the main office. That was a great. Uh, repainted curves and, and parking arrows, so all the, all the safety yellow curves were all repainted, and all the arrows, good student pickup, they were all done as well. Um, exterior light, that was done as well. I C, actually painted, main office hallway, six classrooms, and bottom floor back, so the second floor back, that's all red. Um, power washing, well, progress for that building. Placed, not working. Lights, uh, had some water drains, so we installed two new downspouts in front of the building. Um, we moved a lot of fluid items out of river rock, desks, chairs, tables, a lot of teachers wanted things, we jumped on pretty quick. And intermedia center teacher wanted a lot of stuff, so first, the classroom for the B C I U program, um, we got the tables, chairs, everything was at river rock, cleaned up, polished up, and everything else. Um, and everybody had the most for breaking. So we're six weeks, six weeks out from the tier, and I'm not starting, that is the hunt. I had to put together a four key map, which I had to definitely scratch, and it took me a week, um, to identify if all the four, this is, you know, we have four classrooms that are arrow, and the next four classrooms that are vest, you know, the second floor, so we added five, positive vests, and a classroom for arrows, so I had to just start this rash, put this map, this whole out together, so we're six weeks out. We're six weeks out. I'll probably just push this off until like next week.
And uh, Peyton, and then our next assembly meeting is uh.
Thanks Chris, thank you. Uh, finance committee, our June ten meeting was canceled, there's been reports. David, that's our nice meeting, it's always nice to meet you. Oh, comment on finance committee board?
Rich Martin here, still without any township. I'm gratified to see that multiple people stood up here to make the talk about taxes. Lucky, I know you're anxious to be waiting, but at the end of the meeting, I didn't email, I'm gonna read it myself at the end of the meeting.
But I did miss one. I missed something from you June, so.
I apologize. But, Russ, back to finance committee. In thirteen months, we've only had six finance committee meetings. With all the pressure, with all the focus on revenue and budget and taxes, you only had six finance committee meetings. August was about the horrible audit pickaxe. September and October was about tax. January and March was about, briefly about the budget workshops, and May was about the budget renewals. And what I'm gonna talk about at the end of the meeting is your whole budget and tax increase was basically based on numbers the administration said they wanted. Instead of having finance committee meetings to develop the numbers yourself. Thank you.
Thanks Rich. So a lot of those non-meeting for finance committee were in lieu of budget workshops. We drew a lot of information for those budget workshops, I was part of the teaching plan. Those were the numbers based on, uh, those conversations and the information you gave from sleep from other sources. Finance committee. So it wasn't that we just blew the finance committees, we reduced budget workshops.
Uh, Jake Arbo, he's very glad to cover it. Uh, one question I do have on the T F. Uh, has there, have you looked into any of the progress that's happening with permits? With the cost, with whether it's sort of breaking ground, because in your, uh, in, in your presentation, year one was supposed to be this year. We were supposed to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards our budget. It doesn't look like it's happening. Have you reached out to anyone from the township or the builder or the county?
Just the other day.
I'm sorry.
But they just started, I believe it's a project.
No, that's another part, that's another.
That's another one?
Yeah. You didn't have to give them any, we're there, but, uh.
We were given.
I don't know.
I'm just.
We're talking this is a project, I regret having June, but I have not received, oh, I cannot follow up again since June, uh, they didn't receive nothing. I, I would have had that from me, um, but it's part of that time to get another update from them.
Okay, my, uh, my other comment, um, is with raising the taxes. If you do not raise taxes this year, and you realize that you should have raised taxes. The final year, you do that act one, the big tax, and go up above your normal, uh, tax increases. So you could go this year without raising taxes. If you realize that it fits too much into your funds, you can ask, you know, you can vote next year on the regular plus the big tax. So there is really necessary have to raise taxes this year, you could put it off. And if need to increase it more, you do that next year. I can't hear you.
Yeah, go back for increasing more, okay, I can do that. And then we're losing a year of revenue to put back these, uh, to relieve that services. That we're a train to do.
But you have hard proof. Right now, these are just estimates that you guys are throwing out. This next, you know I made that, so the next.
Right, so, so, you know, you're part of this, is you like perform, right, so you do assumptions, and you put up. You know, it's the bank is, we're thinking, so, they're gonna like perform.
No, I, I know, I'm just saying. Okay, thank you.
I think we also discussed that in the event, uh, based on what we were like Royal Cards and other like businesses. And we found that there was too much, and I think we discussed we could always go on the cup, right? That's kind of like you can't talk on.
Yeah, exactly, so that is something we are going to actively, because we're starting, we're starting to get that, taking action on the cup.
And, and we said that during all these conversations before, you know, once we got a chance to see the thing from ground. If there was an opportunity to, to do a give back, I mean, reserve, if we'd say, hey, here's, I think that's, so, we're gonna do that, right, so. You know, it all depends on how the shit's out, there's like, there's nothing on the table, but say that we're not gonna be able to just, and to do, you know, better than that. Based on this issue, we can get based on the amount that we have. You have a public comment on the finance committee? Policy review. So that was supposed to be your seat? Oh, I'm gonna say. Policy review, um, we canceled, and the, we're waiting for an update from Mr. Superstall, it's a policy updates. It regards to changes of title line, it just came about. Our next meeting comes on the ninth of September. Thank you, Tom. Thanks, gentlemen. Your old business. Misses degrees, June tenth. Any questions about that? Public comment on the old business sense. No, I ain't gonna do business. So, public comment on the business, but we have a presentation of other, and issues.
That'd be a shame maybe in your own county, right?
All I can say is thank you, Rich. Thank you, Rich. And after that last speaker, she was trying to say I didn't have to record all the seventeen emails, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome. The numbers I'm citing here are from the eighth one eighth, the June tenth voting meeting recordings. And Russ, these ballots are directed toward the board members who voted on a tax increase, not the administration. I want to thank the two board members who are gracious enough to rightly admitting they made a mistake, proving Cooper's extended health benefits. Which by the way, he's now being paid as a consultant and T D while we're paying his health, that's truth. Having said that, it seems to me our current school board is once again placed in an awful lot of blind faith in the financial numbers provided by the current administration. This might be acceptable, except I think too many of those numbers, pray they pulled out of thin air or a vest of guest of it, guest of it. For that even beginning contract negotiations, many of the core expired labor contracts, the administration had publicly set aside. On putting million percent of our benefit increases, implying the raise property taxes by at least two point three percent. After a lot of happy talk about what was being cut out of the budget, it was undetermined the taxes would require three point seven five percent increase, not two point three. And that was even before finalizing the labor contracts. On May twentieth, the voting meeting agenda included a vote of the teacher contract, and when I asked about the total increase cost. Salary benefits, we learned two things, several members from board who were gonna vote on the contract, hadn't even seen it. And no one in the administration could tell us the total salary benefit increase. Later, after the board voted, the CFO claimed the increase would be approximately seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. On June tenth, the voting meeting agenda included a vote on three remaining contracts. And once again, I asked the total increase for all four contracts, no one could tell us the total increase. In fact, the CFO gave a long winded explanation stating he found the question offensive, even though it was public. Now, couldn't state the total, later in the meeting, he claimed it was seven hundred and thirty-three thousand for teachers, seventy-seven thousand for administrators. Seventy thousand for support, fourteen thousand for secretary, a total he claimed to be roughly eight fifty, eight hundred and fifty thousand. And it actually adds up closer to nine hundred thousand, but by equivalent fifty thousand dollars when you're raising taxes one point four million. Here's a question for all of you. The superintendent had set aside one twenty million for salary and benefits, and you only spent nine hundred thousand worth of the other nine hundred thousand dollars? One last numbers question, if I heard correctly, Mr. Gresh said he knew eleven or twelve school buildings that required a new roof, and not one of them cost as much as five million dollars. Since he said that, how many bids have you solicited to hold that total cost of less than five million dollars? Crickets. There's precedent to Daniel Boone School District for a school property tax refund, and I've never heard Russ say you're talking about giving back money. On the wedding, but just last year, Pottstown School District ordered a tax, now ordered a tax rebate to all other locations. Between the nine hundred thousand dollars not spent on salary and benefits, the additional seven hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars from the Pennsylvania budget. That's a one point six million dollars, which is more than the tax increase. And I included the numbers, I know my time's up, but your budget cost for total from the state of twelve point six million. Pennsylvania allocation is thirteen point three million, seven hundred thousand more than you planned. Why is our money being used, and, and Russ, I'm telling you right now, from experience. If you leave that money in the budget, it'll get spent and won't be given back to us next year.
Well, Rich, from experience that I don't have about how this happened in the past, perhaps there will be a cheaper process.
You're talking next year?
Talking, I'm speaking over the office, I'm willing to do something about that.
You're doing it right now. You've just got one point six million more than you thought you had.
Well, according to what you're saying, so without going over it, and certainly I'm gonna be able to hammer that out in the next five minutes. But you've given us your information, I was able to add it to it.
Now bring it up again to it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a special of twenty-five million, and we got one point six.
Yeah, the, the numbers you scored are different than the numbers that we have, so it's, it's hard to do what happens now, it's, it's very difficult.
Uh, my name's Dave Young, Douglasville, um, I'm just gonna lay out an accurate timeline for you, and I promise I'll get this right back with taxes. Uh, on September seventh, uh, my son was sent to the guidance counselor, we were never notified, my son told us that about seven o'clock that night. Um, his mom and I decided we would both go to his back school night the next night, to speak with his guidance counselor and his teacher and find out what his father, what he spoke about. And I got the opportunity, it took his life as we sat at his desk. Within twelve hours, we reached out to his guidance counselor, asked the speaker's guidance counselor, so we could find out what our son spoke to his guidance counselor about. Her reply, I am not speaking of that. Not sure if that had anything to do with the fact that her cousin is investigating the fact of it. But now this ties back into taxes. In the past two months, we had filed, uh, we, in a patch of years ago, we filed numerous right to know requests. Through the office, the, the records have been in the school district. And our right to know request, same ones that if you guys filed, your names, you guys are involved in something in school. And your name is spoken about, because of administrators, and you filed a right to know request, I'm guarantee you, you would get that right to know request. In the past two months, my wife and I, I spent twelve thousand dollars to hire a right to know attorney to get emails with our names on it and our son's name on it. They attempted to deny us the right to know request.
Uh, sir, can you, can you address the word?
Uh, no, I think I kind of, I, I, okay, well, having said that, twelve thousand dollars that we spent on right to know. A, a right to know attorney, because documents are being withheld from us. I can only imagine what Fox Rothschild is charging, in essence, us tax payers. For the school not to answer my questions and my wife's questions. My name's Dave Young, anybody willing to call that question free. Have a nice night.
I wanted to say one thing, because the last time Jake was up here, Jake and I are friends, so, and we are colleagues, so we'll get it, so I didn't need to be, uh, dateless about how we wanna spend more money. I was just giving him a personal chat, so I spoke at a turn, so.
Yeah, you're, you're fine.
I didn't wanna say that, people never will ask, I didn't tell it, but, yeah.
Oh, why?
I, look, I do one meaning, and we were talking about teachers leaving the school district, and one of the schools that's brought up was Muleburg. Teacher for the, the number, I was told that Dave Petty War was astronomical in my mind. So I went on the Muleburg website, and I pulled their teacher's contract. And twenty-four, twenty-five salary, Muleburg first year is fifty-two. Danny Boon is seventy-six. The top with the factors is seventy-nine for Muleburg, eighty-six for Boon. Masters first year, twenty-four, twenty-five contract, sixty-one Muleburg, sixty-five Boon. The top with Masters, eighty-nine Muleburg, ninety-four Boon. Masters plus sixty, first year for, uh, Muleburg is seventy-one. Danny Boon is seven-four, the top, Muleburg is one oh-two, Dan, Danny Boon is one oh-three. Same numbers, basically, Danny Boon is much higher in the two thousand twenty-five year. In the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven. Uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, Muleburg first year's factors. Uh, is it bad? Uh, Muleburg's fifty-six, uh, Boon's fifty-eight. The top is eighty-three Muleburg, uh, ninety Boon. With Masters, sixty-five Muleburg, sixty-eight Boon. The top, ninety-three Muleburg, ninety-six, uh, Boon. Uh, Masters plus sixty, seventy-five, Muleburg seventy-seven Boon. And one oh-six at very top, hundred and six thousand Muleburg, hundred and seven thousand Boon. So, the reason why I, I'm bringing this to your attention is because we hear numbers. And I don't know if anyone goes and does research to find out what is the actual numbers that school districts are, were being compared to. Bring this, only one copy, I'll give it to you. You can photocopy it and send it to anyone, but you can literally go on any of these school districts and pull their teachers' contracts and compare. I was told it was like ten thousand, twenty thousand dollars or more, teachers were leaving to go to Muleburg, and I was like, how can they afford it? But it was wrong, so here's this information.
So I, I need to, I need to answer this, because I feel like this is tearing away at trust and integrity.
Yeah.
Well, we're talking about our administrators, and we're talking about support staff, our teachers' contract is competitive. It was the administrators that were leaving and getting fifteen, seventeen, eighteen thousand dollars more. Some of their support staff at Muleburg get paid more than our teachers. That is, each contract is very, very separate. The teachers' contract at Muleburg, as you pointed out, is competitive with our teachers' contract. But it's the administrators, which is where we've seen an exodus of people. And it's the support staff, where we've seen people leave.
That's what was also brought up with teachers, I know it was administration, and then it was also brought up.
And, and in that one particular case, where I, I don't even remember the person, the, the teacher that left to go Muleburg. I have to look at that one particular case, whatever I'm telling you, I need you to know, I'll back it up, okay? So whatever the situation is, I will one hundred percent back it up. Okay, that's a fact.
Okay, and then my other comment is on River Rock. Did anyone do the analysis of how much it's gonna cost to send ten? You're gonna save two hundred thousand dollars for not having the upkeep, but how much is it gonna cost to send ten Danny Boon students to another location for, uh, troubled behaviors?
That's the cost for students to go there, so it doesn't matter if it's in the lead number of building, or if they move somewhere else out of the district. That's the cost for our students to go there.
So it's still be River Rock they're going to, and they're not gonna change their, their contract? Because their, their costs are probably gonna go up when they, when they rent a new building.
We, we do have some negotiation leverage with them, but they hold some seats for free for us. But, I mean, essentially that's what we're talking about as far as the student rate would increase a little bit, possibly all of that has to be negotiated.
Well, back to those numbers up for the rest.
You always get the data, that's why I'm trying to say.
But, uh, there is gonna be an, an increase, I'm, I'm pretty sure, because they're not gonna be able to get a building for free like they have.
I disagree with that. But that, that is not going to offset if you win some thousand, we'll save annually in, uh, just me and Solo.
I mean, if you're talking some of these schools charge thirty to sixty thousand, times ten, you're at three hundred to six hundred thousand, so. Try to figure this out before you give away your building, you don't have any options left.
The other public comment on the shoes. All right, very done. We will be adjourned.